In our city council meeting for May nineteenth, twenty twenty five, please stand and join us in the pleasure of allegiance. Pleasure allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Stand on the roll.
Legansky.
Here.
Shower.
Here.
Stompanato.
Here.
Sullivan.
Here.
Belzak.
Here.
Gustafson. Kenny.
Here.
Six present and one absent.
You have a quorum, it takes us to questions and comments and announcements of a general nature. This is on our agenda. Several years ago, we put this here for anybody who was in our audience who did not want to stay the entire meeting but wanted to address the council, anything not related to our agenda. This would not be the time for SoCal. All right. Since we have no one, it takes us to our approval of the minutes. I'm looking for a motion to approve the minutes of May fifth, twenty twenty five. Moved by Alderman Stompanato, seconded by Alderman Kenny. Again, any questions or comments regarding the minutes? Stand on the roll.
Stompanato.
Aye.
Kenny.
Aye.
Legansky.
Aye.
Belzak.
Aye.
Sullivan.
Aye.
Shower.
Aye.
Six ayes and one absent.
Minutes have been approved, takes us to receiving and communications. Do any of the Alderman have communications they'd like to share? Mary?
The continuation goes on with Carriage Greens Golf Course. I have received several communications again from the owners, Brian Adrianne Broderick. Sadly, the vandalism and the trespassing continues. I've also had some nearby residents reporting youth riding e-bikes around the course at night onto the greens, causing destruction. And it's very troubling because the residents are trying to be as vigilant as possible. Both homeowners associations, Carriage Way West and Pinehurst have sent out communications reminding their community members to keep an eye out, to be vigilant, to call nine-one-one immediately. But if anyone has seen the e-bikes racing around town, which we'll be addressing at a later date, you know, they move pretty fast, but the damage has been done. It continues to be done. People are continuing to trespass and it's very upsetting to the owners and it's very costly. And this is kicking in a high gear, maybe not this week, with the setback in temperatures. But you know, golf season is ready to be full-blown and it's really a setback for them. So they're evaluating some options. I'm hoping that we can get a meeting with some of the homeowners. But you know, there's open communication right now at the city and the police department trying to get in touch with this. There's also been reports that people are helping themselves to the golf course after hours, playing golf, not paying. And you know, I give the Brodericks a lot of credit, they don't really want to press charges against young people, but unfortunately, that's what has to happen in order for, you know, the judiciary system to take action. So I guess this is a little PSA, you know, stay off the course, pay to golf, keep your bikes on the street, and if not, you're gonna get hit with a ticket and maybe go to jail.
Twenty years ago, we had some similar situation when I was ward five Alderman. We had significant damage to the golf course and the Brodericks threatened to fence in the golf course. And we met at Carriage Greens, Kathy Menardie helped me organize it. And we had about three hundred and fifty people at Carriage Greens and they took a very strong stand and they caught. The individuals were responsible and that kind of settled that. And there was no need to put a fence up, but the Brodericks are again talking about installing a fence around the entire perimeter. In fact, Adrianne contacted Mr. Grombeck, wanting to know about the permitting process and all that. So I think they're a little bit more serious this time. So it is a shame, the damage that they're doing. They're getting two hundred golfers on a Saturday and so they can ill afford not to have the golf course looking at its best. So really, I agree with Mary, it's a shame. Hopefully, we can organize another meeting and put this fence talk to rest and catch the people who are doing this. But people walking on the golf course at night, people playing golf when they're not supposed to be playing golf or not paying, children riding their e-bikes on the golf course, it just, you can't go on.
Today, we had a, we, Chief Nathan Norton, had a meeting with the Brodericks and had a lot of good conversation, good meeting, discussed various options that could be employed, discussed what the police can do for them, so we had a very good meeting.
Just out of curiosity, Chief, I know we don't have an ordinance, but with these e-bikes, I mean, it's, we mentioned it in the last meeting, it's gotten really, I mean, what can we do, you know? I mean, they're flying down the street thirty, thirty-five miles an hour and I had two people on a, like a, you know, with the handlebar, almost looks like a, you know, thank you. And they had two of them, they're going thirty and they're jumping over the speed bumps and they almost ran in the back of my car, they're like, oh, I mean, yeah, I don't know what can be done, but it's just, it's, my concern, eventually something's gonna happen, you know?
Yeah, that's on me. I was put together the ordinance, met with Brian and the mayor, discussed those issues, came back, I was going to send it to Alderman to have input. I was literally like a click away, realized I didn't put scooter into the ordinance. So I had to do that and then send it out to you. So that's on me.
At least you got some, I mean, because like I said, I'm just afraid somebody's gonna get hurt. It's gonna happen, unfortunately.
And I think we've all experienced it, driving around our community, and most of the reckless driving is happening with underage.
Oh, yeah.
Like definitely, you know, the eight to fourteen-year-old range, I'm gonna say. And so like parents, you know, let's do a little parenting here and make sure, because you know, car versus e-bike, the car's gonna win and the e-bike's not. And I mean, it would kill me to see someone get seriously injured or worse because they just weren't being, you know, go to Safety Village, these kids clearly didn't go to Safety Village in the day, because if they did, Sidney Hagan would have made sure they knew, that's just not how you ride a bike.
I'm going down Claretton Hills this week, all right? It's thirty miles an hour, so I'm heading south, okay? And they got e-bikes coming north on the right-hand side. All of a sudden, this one kid starts to go into the other lane and I literally slow down and stop so he can pull back into his lane and keep going, but he's right on the street doing, you know, twenty-five, thirty miles an hour, whatever those speeds were, you know? It's, and I'm like, what are you gonna do?
I had a very close call like two weeks ago. I mean, I just missed somebody.
So Chief, you're.
On a scooter. No, I'm sorry.
Chief, you're gonna make that change then and you'll do again, you'll send it out to the council?
Yeah.
As you mentioned, you were gonna do.
I'll send it out tomorrow, it's not that big of a thing. But I, again, just to add the scooters into the policy.
And we don't normally.
Just be careful what you ask for, because if you don't want them on the sidewalk, now you got an eight-year-old, ten-year-old, twelve-year-old on the street, if you don't want them on the street, now you're banning, virtually banning the process to kids, so. But you'll get that before the conversation, so that.
And Chief, you're a hundred percent correct, that's the issue. You know, you don't wanna, you know, take some, you know, kids' fun away, but where do you make sure that they're safe? That's the problem in this one, you know?
Chief, when you send it, can you send, I sent you the example of what Hinsdale put out.
I used Hinsdale, Claretton, I think it was Claretton Hills.
For Rich, the one too, I think.
I think, I can't remember, I had like six of them.
Okay.
And, but Hinsdale's the one I used.
Because they had that nice graphic, I think that just was visually easy to.
There's a lot of stuff that, they had licensing, I don't know if we want to go to licensing, all that kind of stuff. So I took that out. You want to license them, I can put that back in, but the discussion's really yours to how you want to frame that. And then, once you have that framed, then we'll be responsible to do the enforcement.
You know, Chief, honestly, at least if they had a license, you can take a picture and report it, because so many times, by the time you see it, you know, we've had issues and they're gone and you guys.
That license is that big.
Oh, it is?
Goes on the.
It's like the little toy, like the kitty license you get at the.
Gotcha. There's no way, okay.
Cracker Jake Max. Just sticks on.
It's not.
It's just like now, that there's a sticker on there that says it's class one, class two, or class three, you can't see that.
Okay.
You have to actually make the stop to look at the e-bike, see what class it is.
Anyone else have communications? I have a communication I received and maybe Mary will be familiar with it, but this individual rides Old Field Road a lot. And he rides Old Field Road and he makes a turn onto Frontage Road. And his comment is, there's difficulty turning onto Frontage Road. Every day I'm heading home, I have great fear of making that turn. It is hard to see cars coming on the right or the left due to the trees in the forest and the cars driving on Frontage Road have no stop sign and come at a speed limit of forty miles an hour. And he said he starts other people, and I'll be quite honest, when I go to Alpine, I'll take North Frontage Road to go back, or when I go to Alpine, I take Old Field Road to North Frontage Road. And I almost have to pull out onto Old Field Road to be able to see if cars are coming from either direction. So he is right in saying that there's a lot of trees and brush that really obscure your line of vision when you're trying to make that turn. He's suggesting tree trimming, I don't know anything about that down.
We have to take a look at it, more than likely, I believe that's private property. I'm gonna have to double check since where my line is.
I'm pretty sure both the obstructing shrubbery is private property. But it is getting, it's, my husband's even commented on it.
We'll review it, see what opportunities there are, I guess working with, helping unincorporated as well, so. Be a goodwill gesture at best from the resident that lives there, but whether or not, you know, again, not being a resident, being adjacent to the state, I think it's gonna be a limited protocol there as far as us doing something, if anything.
I travel quite a bit and I don't really notice the problem with the trees, but the way the street is angled, I think it's more the angle, so when I'm pulling onto Frontage Road from Old Field, I actually turn my car to the right so I can see whether there's cars coming to the right. The left isn't really as much of an issue, coming from the right, but I don't really notice an issue with trees, so it could be some.
That's a good point, Mike, because there is a geometrical configuration there that requires you to hold out to see that curve.
Yeah, it's not a T, it's not your typical square intersection.
It's not a T, yeah, it's not perpendicular.
Anything else? Okay. Takes us to our mayor's report and tonight, we're gonna have a talk by Mr. Rich Pachata, which represents SoCal. I don't know if you, I think Mary's aware of it, so I might have mentioned it. June twenty-fifth, SoCal is gonna be holding the twenty-fifth annual SoCal, I think it's SLET, S-L-E-T, which are a series of games and activities that will take place primarily at Hinsdale South High School. And it's probably gonna bring a thousand to fifteen-hundred people into our Darien community. So Rich, if you'd like to make your presentation, or is yours?
Yeah, thank you. I'll just give a brief description and presentation. First of all, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, Board. We greatly appreciate you letting us come present. This is very exciting for us. We, similar to the Olympics, from around the country, we would put in a bid to host the next SLET, as you call it, as we call it, and put in a bid, and we did that, to hopefully successfully have this in twenty twenty-one, but we all know what happened then, so we had to postpone. And they graciously let us keep the bid, so, because everything was already in motion, we had kept the bid for twenty twenty-five. So here we are. I'll just give you a brief explanation of our organization. Our movement, the SoCal movement was founded in eighteen sixty-two in the Czech lands and later became Czechoslovakia, now Czech Republic and Slovak Republic. The original purpose was to foster democracy among Czech people living in the oppressive Austria-Hungarian. Empire. And the American SoCal was founded in eighteen sixty-five, based on. Founder Miroslav Tiers. And the first unit opened in, and then they finally brought that to America, and the first unit opened in Saint Louis in eighteen sixty-five, which is still in existence today. So I'm the president of the central district, which basically encompasses Illinois, Wisconsin, Missouri, and there's still Saint Louis, Milwaukee, and we have six units. Seven units here within the Chicagoland area. The SoCal, the Czech word for SoCal, or SoCal is the Czech word is falcon, that's the symbol of our organization. And the word slet, Czech roughly means flocking, the flocking of birds. So we're gathering to have a competition. You can think of it as our Olympics. This is basically, we get together every four years somewhere in the United States and this will be our twenty-fifth meeting, so. And, you know, since recent years and the Czech land becoming Czech Republic, since nineteen ninety-three, they're allowed to now practice and meet. So every six years, some of us gather and go there to their slet. And we were just there in twenty twenty-four. So, and you can imagine how huge it is there because they're very, that's basically their, their, you know, their athletics per program. So I have a handout for each of you, and if you have any questions, these cool things are all done by Matt Carlosi, our marketing guy. So I just wanted to keep it brief and have a one-page handout for you guys. And our schedule's on the back. And it's actually open to a lot of different people. We have pickleball this year because we all know pickleball is like taking off and everybody's putting pickleball courts in everywhere, so. We don't have any e-bike competitions. I will tell you, I don't, I don't live in Darien, but I live in unincorporated DuPage, right next to Darien, Claire Hills Road, and you guys are right, these guys, it's amazing the power, and I'm a gearhead, but the power of those things, I mean, they'd be going like fifteen miles an hour and they just crack it up and they're riding a willy right down Seventy-Fifth Street, it's unbelievable. But, so it is definitely a problem that we see everywhere. But, but yeah, so all of our activities are on the back here. We got a, almost a full week of stuff. And you might ask, why Darien? So, why Darien? We're not new to Darien SoCal, the word SoCal. You might, some of you might know on South Frontage Road, there's a SoCal court. Street named SoCal Court. That property was all owned by a handful of gyms that had kind of disbanded, maybe due to population and membership, put all their monies together and they had bought all that farmland there. They were going to build a large SoCal and on the property. Over the years, things had happened and then they ended up selling the property and buying a building in Downers Grove, Elite Sports Complex at Sixty-third and Belmont. They are still there today. So that's where, where the new, I think, apartment building is, that was going to be the building and then surrounding area, so that's where SoCal Court came from. And then, the other reason Darien, all my children went to Hinsdale South. I know the coach real well. We always try to find a place with gymnastics equipment because that's primarily our activity, is gymnastics. To bring equipment in and have it set up, it usually costs ten, twelve, thirteen thousand dollars just to have it brought there and you still need the manpower to set it all up. The high school has everything we need, so we worked with the high school, we worked with Jared Amos, the coach there, gymnastic coach, to put this together. And the school's been great, so far the city's been great. We appreciate you welcoming us and we're looking forward to an awesome week, so. If anybody has any questions, of me, Mary?
Thanks, Rich, so much. We're excited to have SoCal and SLET Olympics here. If you were to say, you know, things for us to attend, clearly the kickoff party at the stadium would be something, you know, elected officials would be, but.
Absolutely, and we would love for you to be at the kickoff. We're gonna have a five K fun run walk, so I mean, that, you know, almost anybody can participate in that, there's gonna be a ribbon-cutting ceremony for that. And we would love Joe to come speak at the kickoff, for sure. And then, you know, you're welcome to anything else. We have a banquet that's gonna be there. We're at Compass Arena, basically because that, we're already just over three hundred some for that and there ain't too many places that can handle three hundred people, that's our slet celebration. So after our big performance on Saturday on the fields all day, we're having a celebration there, so.
Rich, the, you've asked me to do the opening remarks, we did a congratulatory letter that we gave you that you're gonna put in the program, and you'd like a proclamation, and we'll work on a proclamation.
Appreciate that.
To get that done. And, you know, this is an honor for us to have this in our community, it's gonna bring some business to our businesses with all the people that'll be here. I understand, though, there's gonna be about thirty people from the Czech Republic that are gonna be coming.
Try three hundred and ninety-eight.
Three hundred and ninety-eight.
So we've become very close with the Czechs over the years because, again, since they became a republic in nineteen ninety-three, January first, nineteen ninety-three, they became a free land again, right? So they're, during communist rule, they weren't allowed to have any activities and be physically fit and anything like that. So us, been traveling back and forth, you make friends, and I think Barb was just there, not for the slet, but she was just there in the Czech Republic recently. We had a couple of gentlemen come in to teach us their calisthenics, so that when we got there, we were ready to know exactly what they wanted us to do, so we had a whole group, a whole block from Canada and America, US, that performed on the field with twelve hundred men and women. So, you know, they are returning the favor and they have three hundred and ninety-eight coming. They'll be staying all, mostly at the Marriott Delta and a few scattered, I know, I know some of them were at La Quinta and they had a fire, but, and you call there and it goes to Red Roof Inn, so I don't know, you know, what's happening, but regardless. And why Darien, why Hinsdale South? Number one, the equipment, the hotels are close by, if, you know, they're here, basically, they're gonna have school buses and stuff that take them, they want to tour the city and stuff like that, but they can walk to Hinsdale South from the hotels. And there's restaurants all up and down Route eighty-three and, you know, down Plainfield Road in Darien and so it's just, it's all just really close. The furthest thing we have is, I think in Bedford Park, we have a social for the children at the, what is that arena now?
Interesting.
Yeah.
You're missing the number one reason.
Pardon?
You're missing the number one reason. Darien's a nice place to play.
Rich, we could do some publicity for you, we could put this on our Darien Direct Connect, if you'd like that.
And I brought some, I mean, I've got some of these going up. So, of course, being Czech, we love our Czech beers or our Pilsner beers, so Matt took it upon himself and he, he had, well, not himself, but he had Noon Whistle Brewery from Lombard and Naperville make us our own exclusive beer called Flight of the Falcon. We're going to taste it on June thirteenth, a tasting, and we're having cans made, barrels made, chicken baskets already, vowed to take two barrels, I'm getting Zazos, who I frequent quite often, leave Zazos, they're hopefully gonna buy some barrels, and I'm getting posters, so I have some posters here, if anybody wants, I can leave them here, so this is basically. A few R-codes and stuff on there and you can. Quick, easy, easy thing there. Yep.
Why don't you leave that for us, we'll get that out to some of the community organizations.
And hang in there. And then just electronically send, you know, the thing so that they can put it in or connect it on the website.
Yeah, and I originally shared this poster with you and I think the very first bulletin, but, you know, this handout kind of says it all too, so.
You know, my familiarity with this is, and Ted probably remembers, because I was an Alderman when that SoCal property request, I, of course, fifty-five, you know, there was talk of a gymnasium being built and everything like that. And it's funny, when this came up, I mentioned this to Barbara, because Barbara and I were in the Rotary together and found out Barb was part of SoCal. She was a gymnast, I have a good friend who went to University of Utah and won an NCAA championship, and she was part of SoCal, she did some of her training there. So gymnastics has always been a part of this.
Oh, yeah, primarily, yes.
And if you know Eastern European, I have a good friend of mine, one of my dance instructors, they were from Moldova, some are from Poland, some are from Moldova, some are from Ukraine. And for them, this is their gym, their gym is dancing and gymnastics and everything like that.
You know, many believe that, you know, the calisthenics or aerobics, hand exercises, the original dumbbells, I still have some from our gym, were wooden dumbbells, you know, and hand apparatus, you'd be surprised, the calisthenics, it was all invented in, yeah, in Europe, Germans. Czechs, Polish, Polish Falcons, same organism, pretty much the same thing. All over Croatia, there's SoCal's in Croatia, from all over the world. SoCal's in Canada, so Barb has a lot of friends from Texas, Texas Czechs are huge, go down there, they're, so, and I think it was it, was it nineteen thirty-three or thirty-six, the SoCal slet. Was on Soldiers Field and there were ten thousand men drilling on the field at the same time. That was the big Soldiers Field, not the football field, so the whole field, so, and a lot of, of course, neighborhoods were built by the Czechs, Pilsen neighborhood, named after Pilsen.
Any questions for Rich?
Real quick, on the twenty-sixth, this is bar and restaurant on site, where is that located at?
Oh, that's the old, the old chalet, was racquetball, that's in Willow Springs, right at German Church and Wolf Road? Yeah, that used to be Score Fitness and now TPS bought it, The Perfect Swing, the family owns it. So that's where our volleyball tournament's at, because they have four courts. You know, we could have easily had the volleyball at Hinsdale South, but at the time, when we were trying to schedule, nobody wants to schedule anything out a year in advance. And a high school always has construction during the summer, so we deal with that, so they just can't commit. But because of their camps, we weren't able to really get the field house for volleyball, so we took that off-site. That's just right down the street, though, in, on German. That's just right down the street though, in, on German Church and Wolf Road, so.
Rich, I told Barbara you need to let me know how long I have on June 25th to give the opening remarks. Cause I could go on for a long time.
Okay, um.
I reckon I'm giving him a time limit.
You'll have to deal with Howie, you'll have to deal with Howie on that. I'll make sure, uh, he, he.
Gets a hold of me.
Yes.
Okay.
Keeps you, keeps it short.
Are we having any like beer or anything in this area? Do you have to get a liquor license for them?
No, there's no beer at the school.
Nothing around the areas or anything? I'm just asking the question.
The beer's just strictly at restaurants and to buy, um, cans. It's all being, huh?
Unless we get it sorted out.
Do we have a proclamation for that?
All right. Anything else?
Any que, any, any questions?
Yeah, 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 that's, where are the breweries?
On the brewery tour.
Yeah, where's the brewery?
Noon Whistle, oh, brewery tours?
So we're going to, um, Black Horizon, um, Imperial Oak and ending up in Lions at Buckle Down. Because our event later this evening is in Brookfield at one of the Sokols.
Nice, okay.
Thank you, Rich, appreciate it.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Be in touch or keep in touch.
Appreciate it very much.
Looking forward to it, it'll be nice to hear.
And I was a gymnast too. Competed at Hinsdale South.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you very much, everybody.
All right. Uh, it takes us to our city clerk's report, Joanne.
One announcement, city offices will be closed on Monday, May 26th in observance of Memorial Day.
Thank you, city administrator's report.
No report here, thank you.
Uh, Department of Information and Questions Chief, we have our April 2025 report.
Yes, we do.
You wanna say anything about that or just have us read it?
I was paying too much attention. Sorry. Yeah, no, that World War, uh, two, that looked really interesting. Excellent hero.
That is really interesting.
Yeah, if I may, the Excellent Hero, um, I got to go see it in Milwaukee one time. Um, the gentleman does the whole play, he's a one man show. And as it states, he does, he reenacts his grandfather's experience in a Czech city as, he was from Wisconsin and they needed somebody to, that could speak Czech. And they basically grabbed him and he became, uh, the, the liaison between everybody in the platoon and, uh, in the, in a Czech city where his grandparents happened to be from, so, during World War Two. Very interesting, super cool, uh, play that he puts on.
That was a commercial break for, uh, about the report. Uh, last week was, uh, Police Week. I, uh, was able to get to, uh, a couple of, um, events. Um, Naperville had a blue mask that, uh, I attended, um, very nice. Went to, uh, King County had a memorial on, uh, Wednesday, I think. Uh, rural police had their memorial on, uh, Saturday, so a number of different events. Um, the proclamation that you guys, uh, voted on, I think on the 5th, uh, posted that at PD. So everybody got to see that, uh, uh, your choice in making sure that, uh, officers and support staff knew that you, uh, support them through that proclamation. Public Alerting, uh, System, uh, the DUCOM has a new process, um, cutting out the middleman, so to speak. And so, uh, it's automated, so then when there's an alert through the, um, National Weather System and then automatically tones out, uh, and tones out, uh, the same general, uh, way that it has been in the past. So it's not all of DuPage getting toned out, it's people that are within that, um, targeted area. Just a reminder, um, a lot of people think that that is the notification. That siren is only for people that are outdoors. So don't expect to hear that siren indoors. You hear that, when you get that notification, it's gonna be on your phone. It's gonna be on the radio, it's gonna be on the television. There's a number of different places that, um, you can hear, get that notification. But that notification's never been designed to, uh, be notified, um, in, in buildings. And so just be aware, um, of purpose. Uh, so hopefully that, um, helps some things. Question? The, uh, this month is National Mental Health Awareness Month. Fits well that we, um, uh, started our social worker that, um, you guys appreciate that, voted on and funded. She was here today, saw her, talked to her. Um, and, uh, so she's starting that process. There's some onboarding stuff, there's some, uh, rules about being inside the police station, police building. Beyond the lobby that, um, if you're gonna be there unescorted, you have to go through this Criminal Justice Information Systems, uh, security training and there's some leads in order to see stuff that might be in a police report. Training, so, um, her day, uh, today was mostly, uh, training and getting prepared. Um, there's also information about how frequently we get called for mental health issues and, uh, the 988 hotline versus 911, uh, Smart 911. And, uh, making sure that, uh, if you want and feel the need, you can put, uh, special alerts, um, on the Smart 911 systems that, um, police or, or EMS, Fire Department, whoever might be responding, have, uh, specialized knowledge about what they're, um, going to be involved in. So, uh, and then the rest of it's just the, uh, normal, uh, crime, crashes, concerns and those type of things, the charts and graphs.
Any questions for the chief on any of that data? I have one question, Greg. When they were talking about the new DUCOM system, they were said this new system would only send out, it would only target the areas that were actually in the tornado zone. Is that all, is all gonna be done electronically then?
Everything's done electronically. Um, uh, like I said, uh, a lot of times, um, in the past, uh, far past, five, four, five, six, years ago, uh, they hit the button and everybody in Duke that's protected by DUCOM, uh, services would get that message. And so you might be, you know, length of DuPage, you could be quite a ways away from that, that, um, issue and you're still gonna get that alert. That, that's gone aways, and now, like you said, it's automated.
Any other questions for chief?
Like the, I mean, was the alert that went out on Friday about the dust storm?
Yeah.
That was a, I'm like, what am I reading here?
I was at a dinner and everybody's phones going off in their, uh, restaurant. Everybody's got their phone off looking at it and, uh, uh, cause you can see outside, I'm thinking, what is, what is going on? But, uh, yeah, so, um, the alerts on the phone are forensic.
Any questions for Mr. Comback from Municipal Services?
I don't know where the dust storm was from, Greg, do you?
You know, my car got washed that day.
Never fails.
Yeah, I wanted to.
There you go.
Our street is one of the lucky streets that's getting redone this year. And, uh, we're at the point now where all the new, uh, what do you call it?
Carbon gutter?
Carbon gutters are being installed. And I have to tell you that Suburban Concrete's been wonderful, the city's been wonderful in terms of notices to people. And I wanna thank the Darien Police for letting us park our cars everywhere and anywhere because you can't put them in your, couldn't put them in your driveway, although today we're back. I actually went out to bring the garbage cans in today and the guy from Suburban Concrete came by. I'm standing there with my bathrobe in my mess seat here and he goes, by the way, sir, he says, uh, you can put your car back in the park in your driveway. I said, thank you very much.
He probably didn't wanna see you in your night robe anymore.
I had my mirror badge on, no. Uh, they're doing, they're doing a really nice job and they've been really informative. And when you, when you upset a neighborhood so much like that, where you have to park in the street or find a place to park, it's kinda nice to know when you can go back and, uh, they've been very good about it.
They've been a great partner, I have to say, and I believe this is their fifth year, fourth or fifth year that they've, uh, secured the contract for the city. So, um, really a great working relationship all the way around from communication to warranty issues, to concerns. Uh, it's, it's been very good.
Any questions for Dan? If not, we'll move on to Treasury Report, Michael.
Thank you, Mayor. This evening, I'm requesting council's approval of law number 25, 24, 25, 26 in the amount of $704,698.08 from the listed funds.
We wish to approve, Alden Sullivan, second by Alden Shower, any questions or comments? Number roll.
Sullivan.
Aye.
Shower.
Aye.
Stompanato.
Aye.
Belzak.
Aye.
Kenny.
Aye.
Legansky.
Aye.
Six ayes and one absent.
Warrant's been approved, Mike.
Next, requesting, uh, council's approval of law number 25, 2602 in the amount of $24,231.05 from the listed funds. Payroll for the period ended May 15th in the amount of $325,828.08. Total will be approved $350,059.13.
We wish to approve, Alden Belzak, second by Alden Stompanato, and again, questions or comments? Number roll.
Belzak.
Aye.
Stompanato.
Aye.
Kenny.
Aye.
Legansky.
Aye.
Sullivan.
Aye.
Shower.
Aye.
Six ayes and one absent.
Yeah, warrant's been approved, takes us to standing committee reports, so any of the chairman have, uh, information? Alden Belzak.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Municipal Services Committee meeting will be next week, will be on Tuesday, go to the Memorial Day Holiday. It'll be at 6:00 PM in Council Chambers.
Thank you. Mary?
The next Administrative Finance Committee meeting will be held on Monday, June 2nd at 6:00 PM in the City Hall Conference Room.
Mr. Cunningham.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This evening, the Police Committee met and we approved the minutes for the April 21st meeting. The meeting, those minutes have had to be amended. We'll get those back to Clerk's Office here shortly. Our next meeting is slated for Monday, June 16th, 6:00 PM across the parking lot of Police Training Room, pending agenda items.
And I'd like to announce, and I think I sent this out to all of you, our meeting with the Darien Park District Commissioners will take place on Thursday, June 5th. Uh, that's the date that most of you and as well as the, um, Commissioners can meet. And again, this is part of our strategic plan to meet. Mr. Jabonski and I are gonna create an agenda together and because I'm not at that meeting, that's gonna take place between the two councils, he said I should have an alderperson with me when, uh, we meet Wednesday morning now. And I was gonna ask Mary, I don't know if you're available at nine o'clock this coming Wednesday.
Um, I should be.
If you have a chance, I'd like you to join us for that.
And is that meeting, what time is that meeting for the 5th?
It'll be in the evening, about 6:30, 7 o'clock. We have to pick a time and we're gonna send out a notice, we're gonna ask Katie Rush to be the facilitator for that group. So the, it's real important that we develop an agenda which really gets to the nuts and bolts of things. But that'll be Thursday, June 5th, so please put that on your calendar. All right, that takes us to question and comments, agenda related. Anybody have any questions regarding any items on our agenda? If none, we'll move to old business, there being none, we move to consent agenda, please bear with me. Item A, consideration of a motion to approve a resolution amending resolution. Resolution number R-21-25, the mayor and city clerk to amend the intergovernmental agreement with the Darien Woodruff's Fire Protection District for the reimbursement of the parking lot paving maintenance at 8687 Lamont Road and 7550 Lyman Avenue through the City of Darien's 2025 road maintenance contract with Schroeder Asphalt Services Incorporated as per the contract unit pricing and a contingency in a revised amount not to exceed $200,000. Item B, consideration of a motion to accept a proposal from MuniWeb to redesign and upgrade the city's website in an amount not to exceed $12,750. And item C, consideration of a motion authorized the mayor to sign an agreement with MC Square Energy Services LLC to provide full requirements, electricity supply and related services for the city of Darien's electric aggregation program. Motion to approve. Alden Shower, second by Alden Kenny, and the roll.
Shower.
Aye.
Kenny.
Aye.
Belzak.
Aye.
Sullivan.
Aye.
Legansky.
Aye.
Stompanato.
Aye.
Six ayes and one absent.
Our consent agenda's been approved, we have new business, there's one item under new business. Consideration of a motion to approve an ordinance amending section 3-4-1 and 3-4-2 of the Darien City Code to increase the home rule municipal retailer's occupation tax and home rule municipal service or occupation tax from 1% to 1 and a quarter percent. Motion to approve. Alden Shower, second by Alden Belzak, questions or comments? Okay, Mary?
Oh, just, we did, um, review this and discuss this in the Administrative Finance Committee, um, at the beginning of May. And, um, the intent of this is, um, because the governor signed, um, you know, into law the sunset of the 1% grocery tax, this gives the city an opportunity to recoup that lost revenue which would, you know, hit the city budget, um, quite significantly. Um, and by doing it, um, in this manner versus instituting a grocery tax of 1%, um, it gives us the opportunity to cover more, um, of all the businesses, including Walmart.
And I, I wanted to add, as part of DuPage Mayor's and Managers, I attend meetings with 34 other mayors from DuPage County. And this is a topic of discussion we've had now for the number, like, last three or four months with regard to how we're gonna deal with it. And as of last, a week ago Saturday, uh, 18 of the 35 municipalities in DuPage County have either passed an increase in the home rule municipal sales checks like us or they've passed a new 1% grocery tax. So we're not doing this alone. And what people need to understand is down in Springfield, budget is tight this year. They're about a, uh, half a billion dollars short of revenue this year. And that means no increase in LGDF for us, which again, goes towards infrastructure, police. And we're also looking at the possibility of another big increase in our police pension, uh, contribution. None of which is, uh, everything is, that could be negative is, is, is happening. There's no more money coming from Springfield for LGDF and yet we were gonna lose almost $700,000 in grocery tax. So this is, this, this has become a necessity. And when people say, I'm real happy they got rid of the 1% grocery tax, what people need to realize is, if you spend a hundred dollars, it's one dollar. That's what it is. And, and I've had people say they, they were really happy to get rid of that tax. Well, a lot of municipalities felt the same need as we did to pass something to recapture some of that money. And that's how we're doing it. We're doing it because we're gonna probably get about $800,000 now because of our sales agreement with the, with Walmart. So, um, that just gives you a little history of where we're at. Any other discussion? If none, the roll.
Shower.
Aye.
Belzak.
Aye.
Kenny.
Aye.
Legansky.
Aye.
Stompanato.
Aye.
Sullivan.
Aye.
Six ayes and one absent.
And that has been passed. Questions and comments and announcements of a general nature? Anyone have anything they'd like to add? I, I have one item, uh, this weekend, uh, I had the, I attended the Darien Dash. As you know, it's now run by the Darien Business Alliance. We had our highest turnout of runners. We had over 300 people participate in the, the run, the, the 1K, 5K and the 10K. And it was really a beautiful day to, to run, to be out there doing it. But I have to tell you, right before, about an hour before the, anything began, a woman walked up to the registration booth. She had a long dress on, regular shoes and a purse over her shoulder. And she said, I'd like to sign up. And I said, well, would you like the one mile walk? And she goes, no, I wanna do the 10K, which is a race, you know? She signed up for the, she goes, I, she says, today's my birthday, I'm 82 years old. She goes, and I've decided I'm gonna do the 10, the 10K. And I remember standing at the finish line with her medal in my hand, waiting for her to cross the finish line. She was the last person to come in and I put the medal around, over her neck and she goes, why am I getting this? And I said, because you were first in your age group. She was the only person in her age.
That's great.
But talk about a, a beautiful individual. In fact, I'm gonna write about her in my mayor's messages this coming week. But it was a beautiful activity. I wanna credit April and, and Amanda from upstairs and Jessica for all the hard work they did, for all of our sponsors. Uh, it really turned out to be a great event and, um, uh, you know, congratulations on that. And the other thing I wanna mention is, if you go past Chestnut Court, you'll see the setup for the Memorial Day, the Memorial Weekend Carnival. It's all set up. They're gonna fence it in so that we don't have any, uh, activity going on when they're not supposed to have activity. And if you get a chance, Friday, Saturday and Sunday and Monday, that carnival will be, will be taking place at the Chestnut Court Shopping Center. And we wanna thank Mr. Bahavanasi for allowing us to have that in that center. And that's all I have.
By the way, Mr. Mayor, Trevor said he had a great time talking to you at the, at the, at the Darien Dash. Wanna let you know about that.
I had a, I had, and, and again, it's always hard to notice him when he's growing facial.
Yeah, tell me about it, so.
And what was your time in the 10K, Mayor?
You know, I did the entire, I did the entire circuit in about ten minutes, but I was driving a golf cart.
Somebody you had, uh, some four-wheel Sunday.
Motion to adjourn. Alden Shower, second by Alden Kenny. All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.